This full year 2425 budget has failed three times this year. The next referendum will be held on Tuesday, June 18th, in the Town of Talbot Library in the program room from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If this referendum does not pass, the tax bills will have to be issued pursuant to the Town Charter, Section C9-10, having included a copy of the charter. If the budget referendum passes and is approved on June 25th, the Tax Office will make every effort to send bills out with a new mill rate. If the mill rate has not been set by July 1st, then July tax bills will be sent out based on the previous year's mill rates of 37.33 for both personal property and real estate bills. Motor vehicle bills will be sent out with a statewide cap on motor vehicle mill rates of 32.4 cents, so that will remain the same. Moreover, if a new mill rate is set after July 1st of 2024, then there will have to be a second billing for January 2025. The January 2025 billing will be retroactive to July 1st, 2024, for the difference in the old and the new mill rate. It will also include the second installment calculated at the adopted new mill rate. In order to avoid future confusion, we want to inform you of this possibility should we not have an adopted mill rate in time. This will likely cause the Tax Department, as well as the Town Manager's office, to have significant citizens' calls and concerns. I have contacted our tax software company, QDS, to inquire about the cost of a second billing. This includes the additional costs for printing, postage, envelopes, software changes, and other processing. They quoted the grand total at $3,913.83. We negotiated with QDS and they agreed to waive a significant fee for what the special programming would cost to adjust all of the bills in our system based on a new mill rate. Taking into consideration the approximate amount of extra hours, approximately 15 hours each, that employees may have to work if we do a second billing would be approximately an extra $825.30 from payroll. The grand total for the extra cost to the town would be approximately $4,739.13 for the second billing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions about this? Okay. Thank you very much for that very thorough explanation.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. So we will move on to item five, which is the consideration of the Town Council's proposed FY 2425 budget.
Thank you, Chair. So with the defeat of the budget at the June 4th referendum and after a view of previous referendums over the last decade, I'm recommending a revised budget as follows. A mill rate of 38.28, which is a 2.54% increase, down from 3.32 and 2.65% from the previous referendum. That's a reduction in the budget of another $50,000. My recommendation, my recommended reduction would consist of that $50,000 coming from the Board of Education.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the Town Manager? Okay. I know Counselor Shay, Council Moran, that earlier tonight, do you want to start?
I appreciate and thank Counselor Shay for meeting with me. We had a productive, cordial conversation, and I appreciate that. And, you know, we shared sort of our thoughts, both of us wanting sort of what's in the best interest of the town, obviously. Unfortunately, we didn't come, we didn't exactly, you know, get all the way there towards, you know, agreeing on a final number. But I'm still confident that, you know, we both want what's best for the town. We just disagree on how to get there. Chair, do you want me to get into any, wait. Or Counselor Shay, do you want us to get into our options or?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Okay. Probably at this point, right?
Sure. So I had proposed, with the recognition that none of this is ideal and I have real serious reservations about continuing to cut the Board of Education budget and the town budget for that matter, because I'm concerned that we're going to start losing, or that we will start losing staff, positions, and services to our residents. You know, with that understanding of sort of the universe that we're operating in, I had suggested absolutely no lower than a 4% spending increase, which would result in an overall spending decrease of approximately $300,000. And that, I would prefer to figure out a way to split this, not 70/30, but that is, you know, certainly an option as well. I feel like it's not ideal. This is sort of in the interest of trying to reach compromise and try to do what's best for the town. I think that's a significant cut. The Board of Education has previously been cut 563,000 and on the town side has been cut 115,000 to date. So I think that's a significant cut in spending for the town. Obviously, I have concerns with that, but recognizing where we are and in an effort to sort of work together to get to a place where we can pass this budget, so we don't, we don't end up in a position where the town occurs additional costs, that's where I.
Thank you. Counselor Shay?
Sure. So I do appreciate Counselor Moran's time. And certainly, you know, we have two different, I guess, two viewpoints. We're the same goal to try to do the best for the town. And I think we both included that, we don't find reductions the same from our viewpoints. So I believe Counselor Moran indicated that it wouldn't be, members of the Town Council wouldn't be willing to go below 4%. And we felt that that was just too, too high of a number still. So at this point, just move on.
You had indicated you will go above 3.4.
Yeah.
Can you speak up, Paul Johnson? Sorry.
Yeah. Sure. So we, we looked at the numbers and we looked at the voters, what they've told us the past three votes. We felt that we couldn't go higher than 3.4 or 4%. So that's currently where we are.
Just for clarification, the percentage you're referring to is a spending increase.
Spending increase.
Okay. Thank you. So just to summarize, it sounds like the Town Manager's suggestion to stay in the paradigm of spending is approximately 4.40% spending increase. I think if I calculated that, like.
Yeah. Yeah. That was the 50,000?
Yeah.
Yes. 4.4 spending increase, 2.5 for tax.
Thank you. And that's anything else? And just how much of a total reduction is that, the dollars?
Dollars, it's. 50,000 or no?
Yeah, it's.
5645.
Yeah. There should have been some scenario shared.
Yeah, but that's the total to the four, then.
No, I'm sorry. That's the difference between the 4.4 and fail.
At the top of the sheet, on the right, under the words "do not change."
Yeah. An additional reduction of 645 out of like 649.
So Counselor Shay just correctly got it wrong. So under Counselor Shay's, it would be a reduction in, you know, overall spending of 645,000. Under my, is a reduction in 200, 305,000, is that right? At least overall, under.
Which one?
By the 399.
$305,000 reduction.
And then under the Town Managers, it's 30,000 actual dollars.
Counselor, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just honestly, I think that's a really large amount. $600,000 on top of what the 600, so a million dollars.
1.2. So it still results in a $2 million spending increase, but we're reducing what was proposed and failed by 645. So we're getting down to 3.44, so that's increase.
Let me ask Lisa, what's the average spending increase per year? Is it, I mean, I know it changes every year, but it's the average.
I don't have that average spending increase. I mean, it's, it's fluctuated over the years. Some years, you've been 1%, some years, you've been 0%, some years, you've been 3%. It really hasn't been that much higher than 3% from my recollection, but I have to go back to all the budgets to see.
2019 was 3.4%.
For spending?
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, I'm sorry. That would be, yeah, a tax increase.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, that's different.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'd have to go back.
Inside it up.
Yeah, I don't want to give them correct information.
Sure. Pardon? Is that a document? Okay.
I think our budget book has a page with historical.
Yeah, just say, bring it up to me. Yeah. Someone.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Something. I thought it was.
Yeah, that's one of the reasons I had chosen this, because it was, it was, it was like an average spending increase. And I mean, some years, like we just said, some years are higher, some years are lower. So we were trying to get close to what the town had been.
I think it's a G1. Very good, Moran.
Yeah. At this point, I think, like all of us, concerned about having to fail again, you know, doesn't, doesn't look good for our town, you know, especially when you're having a credit rating to be evaluated, especially concerning also, you know, more we get up in the summer season, a lot of families, people out on vacation. It's making me more nervous about trying to get a referendum to pass. You know, I recognize what you're saying, calling isn't, is a big reduction, but I feel like we really got to get this through by the next time. It is so important to get it through on the 18th. And I think that a budget that gets us down to a 1.18% tax increase, if I'm reading the spreadsheet right, has a decent, decent chance of passing. And I'd also just like to add, you know, I've been worried after, after we referenced, residents are tired. You can feel it out in some of the emails we've sent. So I feel like we need to, we need to put something out that's competitive, for lack of a better term, that we can feel very confident to get out. I feel like the 3.44% spending increase has, that's a good odds of passing. Based historically, let's pass and then pass. That's all.
I agree. I would like to see this budget pass on the next referendum. And I thought that the last time we were sitting here, that my concern is that you start having people go in the opposite direction for a different reason. This past referendum was, it failed by 26 votes, which is, you know, it's a frustratingly small amount of people. You know, the good news is we had more people come out. You know, if you look at the yes votes versus no votes, you know, we've increased over 200 yes votes. As opposed to no votes have increased maybe, I think, by 50 something, if I can remember off the top of my head. Which tells me that where we were in this last referendum is close to being palatable for the town. Now, I think it's a little reckless to say, we're going to take a huge leap here and assume that because we take a huge leap, it's going to pass the budget. I think that, again, as, as last time we were sitting here, we're trying to find a compromise, you know. Again, we get kind of two polar opposite emails. We get a good amount of emails saying, you know, begging us not to just cut anymore to the Board of Ed. And then we get emails from people saying, you know, please, I really don't want to see so much of a spending increase, you know, can we lower that? And I think, you know, as we were attempting to do last time, I think there was this, this middle ground. I think we got the closest we ever been this last time. I mean, 26 votes is not much. My concern is that we reduced the spending so much, then some of those people, and we've had, and just to, you know, shed some light on it, we've had a fair number of people just immediately say, you know, please do not cut again to Board of Ed. We've already have over half a million dollars worth of cuts to Board of Ed. Please don't do this to us. My concern is that you're going to start getting more no's for that reason, because, you know, what the general narrative is, is a huge chunk of that, that spending decrease is going to come from Board of Ed's side. And I think, you know, what's being proposed by Counselor Shay would result in, I believe, over a million dollars in cuts to Board of Ed. And I would, I would find it hard to believe that that wouldn't have a giant impact. So, you know, with that being said, I really would like to see this pass next time. And I think, again, I think we need to come to an agreement that may not make everybody happy 100%, but, but make it get to the point where we're, we're passing this finally.
Thank you. You're welcome. So I want to contribute a chance for anyone to go second. No, great. Counselor Moran?
My concern, I'll just, one quick point to piggyback on Jen. Under Counselor Shay's proposal, that would, we would be doubling the cut to the Board of Education that they received so far approximately. And I just, I share Counselor Buckler's concern that we'll start with, that the referendum will fail because we've cut so much from the Board of Education. I mean, we know that people have voted no because we've cut too deeply. And we know that people have said that they'll vote no if we continue to cut. Acknowledging that people have said that they voted no because the spending increase is too high. And so I just feel like more moderate approach, which is still significant spending decrease is the right way forward at this point.
Thank you.
I've got a question for, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ryan, $68,000, do you have an idea where that? Make it firm. And I thought we were going to get a list of all the cuts in from the start from the, if I could process started.
I do have that. I thought you did get that. I'll make sure you do get it.
Because I know a lot of people think that things were not really reduced on the outside. They actually were. That's what I think comes from the start of all the meetings with the directors.
But, you know, even when you track on $68,000 now, I will reevaluate, you know, where that'll come from at this point.
Where was the last one that came from? Because you didn't.
Staffing.
Yeah, and just a, just a quick point. I mean, I don't want to deny that there are some people that are, you know, voting no, as I think the budget is too low. But, you know, we've had three referendums. First one failed by 110, second one brought it down, closer to 100. This one failed by 26. You know, I think, my point is that we got to go, we got to go down and then we're going to pass. So I understand people who have that concern, but if the opposite, if we're, it was true that most people were voting against it because they thought it was too low, then I would expect this last referendum. That's all.
I do have to say, okay, we want to go around. I didn't mention at the last council meeting that people are voting no. I mean, you have a right to go however you want. That budgets don't go up if you vote no. So you actually, 26 votes could have been the difference. Just thinking. So whatever goes forward, just support the budget. Support the whole budget.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm done. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay. I just wanted to make your money. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry. Counselor Moran?
I just want to agree with Counselor Utechek. And I said this at the last meeting. If the whole council stands behind the budget and supports it and explains that it's necessary, this is what we need to, you know, effectively run this town, I'm hopeful that we can do that. That's what I wanted. Last time, I officially, to the Vice Chair, Counselor Utechek, for writing their op-ed in support of the budget. Again, my concern is if we go, you know, if we cut too much, my concern is that we won't reach a consensus on the council. And so we will continue to have a problem passing the budget. I think it's important, if it's possible, which, again, I appreciate Counselor Shay, you know, in our conversation, trying to do this. But if we can get to some sort of consensus, I think it's in the best interest of the town. You know, I don't know if we're able to do that, but that's certainly my hope. And I agree with Counselor Utechek that when we all support it, I think the budget's going to have a better chance of passing.
There are motion?
Don't we do things that are bringing a level of that war? When you just start stuff on that?
Going lower than 3.44?
I mean, lower. I love, I meant lower on the.
Lower than the verse.
Yeah, you know what I meant.
So. I said that to interest.
Yeah. At this point, I don't think so, because I, I have a tremendous concern based on history of this town, budgets that have passed, budgets that have passed that 4% would not pass this town. I don't want to sit and fail. I can't fail. We can't have a failure again. And we have to start listening to the people who keep telling us by their votes, and their grant, not everybody, you know. We're talking majority of people, what they expect to see. It's not, it's not what we want, but it's what they expect. And that's why I've gone back. That's a good number. It's still a $2 million increase to the cost to this town. It's, it's 1.6 million going to, going to Board of Ed increase. Compared to Vernon, we've got less than a million increase in their budget this year. And that's a much bigger expenses amount. So we're still getting, and that's 2.7% spending increase. So it's not like, you know, we're, we're reducing expenses. We're still increasing expenses, but it's a more palatable increase that this town has asked us to pass.
I think, and I said this again at the last time we met, you know, we get a no, but we, we don't get an answer as to what the people want. You know, so to sit here and say that people want a 3.44 spending increase is, that comes from nowhere. And maybe there's somebody telling you they want that, but, you know, that's not the majority. You know, the majority did vote no by 26 votes. But, you know, you could sit here and say, they voted no because they want a 0% increase. They want to vote no because they want a 1% increase. This is all speculative. You know, what I'm saying, and I'll say again, is that we were awfully close this last time. And man, have we gained votes in the yes department. And to think that we need such a massive jump to get this vote to go in the right direction, I don't know if that's necessary. You know, I, I have great concerns about what this is going to do to our town. You know, the Town Manager is telling us that we're already to the point where we're cutting staff. We, we got to think what this does to our town. I mean, there's, there's, there's a point where this becomes damaging. And I think, and we've said it before, and I think our Town Manager has said, we can pass whatever budget we put out there. But the biggest problem we have is that we sit here and we vote, and we vote one way, and, and then people get out there and, and we don't have the full support of the Town Council behind this budget. And I'll, I'll tell that, but what Counselor Utechek says, I think that 26 votes, we could have gotten there this past time. I think if we had a little bit more support from all of us, we could have gotten there. We could have avoided sitting here. So again, I respectfully disagree. I don't believe that the town as a majority has told us they want only a 3.44% spending increase.
Let's see.
You also? Yeah. Yes. Counselor Utech?
So I have to say, I agree with Mrs. Buckler here to where, as you look at a budget that failed and almost passed. So run it back. And the, there is a reason, but this is, this is where I disagree. There's a reason why I shared that data from 2007. Because we're right there. We're right there. And if we decide to not listen to the town of what they're asking us to do, and we come out and propagate an almost identical budget, it'll explode. I agree with Counselor Moran last week that if we come out as a council together, that any budget can pass. I don't think that's the case, but I'd like to sit, sit here and think that we still represent the town and, and do what we were elected to do. And ask not to bomb the budget. What I really wanted to say two weeks ago was, I'll see you in two weeks. Here we are. That's bombing, that's tanking the budget. If I were to say that two weeks ago, see you in two weeks. I think folks don't have it this year in this economy. I really don't. I was with all of you months ago. I have children in the school system. I permanently believe in our education and supporting our children and all that good stuff. And as a blue collar worker who works extremely hard to live in this town, I, I will work anything that's in front of me in monetary value to afford to live here and do what's best for this town. However, I'm one person on this board that was elected to do what's best for the totality of this town in its majority. what's best for the totality of this town in its majority. So tonight, I would like to pass a budget as to not repeat history and tank our triple A bond rating and have another failed referendum. A budget that looks good as to what we're being asked to do by the folks of this town.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, this is a bill off of Councilor Noonan's point. Again, just going back to two thousand and seven, and I know it's like yeah, agents, it's possible, but like just to look at what they have. Their their last referendum before it failed was down to like a two point three two percent tax increase. It's actually like lower than what we um, we sent out to us this a couple of days ago. Um, and again, it just kind of goes to the same point where after a certain number of referendums, people just get tired of it. They just want it to be low and um, I, that's kind of why, you know, I understand what what Council Buckler's saying, but I feel like we are, we are close to that point, but we just need to put something more than that. So that's why, uh, I I said for Council Shay's plan. Um, and as it says, and yeah, they ended up with a zero percent tax increase in what they felt they had to go to. And I'm not at one where I want to go that way and do all those cuts, but like, I feel like we gotta come at one point, maybe percent tax increases, but that budget gets, I think that that might actually that's all.
Um, just one other point. Um, so I think where I can reach agreement with, you know, Councilor Shay, uh, Vice Chair Mari and Councilor Noonan is that, uh, you know, we're looking to make spending cuts and, um, I'm not proposing that we, you know, take that lightly and and just make small cuts. I just think that it's really important to, I just, from my perspective, um, of three point nine nine percent spending increase, then a reduction of spending in of approximately three hundred and five thousand dollars is a significant decrease in spending. It's the it's the largest decrease we put forward this year. Um, so while, you know, I respect, um, what Council Mari's saying, um, I just think that the, the three point nine nine proposal is still a significant spending decrease, um, without my concern going too far in the other direction, um, and just, you know, causing a failed referendum for that.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, clarify because Council Mari brought up, um, we'd been talking about spending percentages. Uh, Councilor Mari brought up uh, mill rate change percentages. So just to clarify, um, the mill rate change that was up for referendum earlier this week was a two point six four percent increase. The town manager is recommending a two point five three percent increase. Uh, the three point nine nine percent, uh, spending equates to a one point nine five percent mill rate increase and the three point four four percent spending increase equates to a one point one seven, one point one eight. Sorry, I might be off by, uh, one hundred here or there. I apologize for that. Um, so again, failed this week, two point six four, town manager, two point five three, three, uh, Council Moran, one point nine five, Councilor Shay, one point one seven.
Um, so I'd like to make a motion to pass the three point nine nine proposal.
Sir, second.
I'll second that.
So again, I I just want to clarify the motion, uh, so everyone is on the same page. The motion is to, um, using the sheet, I guess the sheets that Lisa gave us might be the easiest way to go. Lisa, yes, yeah, Lisa. Uh, the the top portion of this, which, uh, includes town government at thirteen million nine hundred thirty-seven, nine hundred eight dollars.
Yes.
Um, Board of Education, forty-four million, two hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred forty-eight dollars.
Yes.
And then no change to debt service for general fund. So the total, uh, sorry, general fund for capital permits. Uh, so the total appropriation is sixty-four million five thousand, nine hundred forty dollars.
Yes.
Okay. And that equates to a mill rate of three point zero eight.
Thirty-eight point oh six.
Thirty-eight point oh six. That's what it says right there, and I didn't forget right. Thirty-eight point oh six, which is one point nine six percent increase.
Point seven three mil.
Point seven three.
Okay.
So just to clarify, Council Moran, that that is your proposal? That is your motion? And Council Buckler, that is your second?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Want to clarification on that? Um, what's the division between
the town council? This proposal was a seventy-thirty split with two thirteen five to the board and ninety-one five to the town.
Is there any further debate on this motion before us? Okay, so. We will do a roll call. Council Moran?
Hi.
Council Buckler?
Hi.
Council.
There.
Council Shay?
There.
Council Utechek? Council Mari?
Oh, yeah.
Bye, and, um, Council Starter is bye. That motion fails three. Is there another motion?
Can I make a motion?
Then.
So I'd like to make a motion to pass a budget with a three point four four percent increase. And if to, that's there's some discussion we have prior to the meeting, we want to change the allocation. Um, because of our concern of, uh, reduction in our, the safety of our town, we decided to pursue that hundred percent budget reduction goes to the board that so it would be a reduction in the previous budget of six hundred and forty-five thousand. It's still a budget increase of two hundred and one hundred and fourteen dollars.
The proposal that you had me send out wasn't that, though.
It, the only difference I changed was just the allocation.
Okay, just so people know when they're looking at numbers, because they're not going to be the same. That's what I shared.
Yeah, we'll just stay on here.
Yeah, so three point four four percent increase in spending with the re- the reduction between the prior budget and this budget. So going from four point four down to four four is a six hundred and forty-five thousand dollar reduction with that going to the board, all going to the board that again, we did that, uh, we're concerned that we reduce our public safety in the town. Which we don't want to do. So let me just the board of that's budget to roughly forty-three, going in eight hundred seventy thousand, that's along line there.
I mean, I can go, I can.
I just want to make sure we we have the motion clear. So if we could, uh, Lisa needs to confirm the numbers, if you don't mind holding on a second.
So that's taking an extra sixty-eight thousand from what I have.
Right.
So that would be forty-three, eight, six, two, six, four, eight for the board event.
And it would stay at fourteen million, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred eight dollars for town government.
Let me just double check that, just to make sure. Said fourteen oh two nine, four oh eight. That's what I said, yes, yes, that you're getting as well. Yes.
Okay, so just to be clear, um, the total uh, appropriations, the total spending is sixty-three million, six hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred forty.
Yes.
Which reflects a spending increase of, sorry.
Two million, one fourteen, five eighty-three.
Or three point four four percent?
Three point four four percent.
Which requires.
Spending increase.
Yeah. Which requires an estimated tax rate of
Thirty-seven point seventy-seven.
Uh, mills for an increase of
Point four four mil.
Or one point one eight percent. Thank you. Uh, Council Shay, is that the motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you're you're good with the second? Okay. Is there any further discussion on this, Council Moran?
Um, that amount of money is, um, is is just shocking to me to cut through the border bed. That would be more than we've currently cut. Um, and, um, I've supported every budget that we've put forward. Um, and I just couldn't support that budget, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just have a comment.
Of course, Council Utechek.
I just remember back at the joint board that, um, me and months, months, months ago, I just remembered that we, whatever budget was put forth, it was asked that we all support it on both sides, like it or not. We just don't do that. Nothing's come from the chairs supporting the budget. Nothing. It's only been the three of us little lemons at the table. I mean, it, you might not like the number. We all have to support it. I mean, that's what the fraction is. You know, so I know he doesn't like it. Nobody likes it. I've never done so many budgets since I've been elected, I feel like. So it, they just think that you have to want to disservice by not supporting it because that's going to make it, having, could have another field of refereeing on. And if that's what you're okay with, then that's your problem.
Can I respond?
Yeah. Sure.
Um, if you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to go around before anyone goes for a second time. Did you want assistance?
Yeah, K, this was a side note. I don't know if your memory is, uh, goes back that far, but I I do remember that night, um, at least for the first time in the council, being okay with pushing the ball to the other side of the field, which was me mentioning that this needs to be fixed at the state level. This is insane for a group of volunteers to be doing what we're doing, but we're doing it, right? Good group of people. We're going to get it done. I remember you saying that you were going to speak with Tony Hall and that then you, then you both would go and speak to our state representatives. I think that still needs to be done.
Great, I think, uh, we could ask them to come back here, so we, under a, doesn't need to be.
Yeah. All right, at least needed to get that out there.
Sure, definitely. I remember that.
Yeah.
Um, Town Manager, could you put on your list of things to ask our s- our state delegation to come in?
Look to.
For an upcoming meeting. Is there any further discussion on the motion before us?
No, you go ahead.
She, uh, you haven't gone yet, so if you don't mind, like.
So I, as soon as a budget passes, I have always supported it and I've supported everyone voting yes. Um, because, again, you know, I know when we wind up back here, we always end up having to cut further. Um, I would have loved to have been able to do that. I I I really would. Um, but I think it's unfair to look at Chris and say, Chris, you're saying you don't support the budget. Um, you know, it it's better off if we do support the budget. But I I think what we've had here is, is, you know, we walk out of this room and we don't always support the budget. Um, maybe that's on purpose. You know, maybe some of the town councillors here have purposefully gone there and not supported this budget publicly so that we end up right back here.
Senator Buckler, I I would ask you not to speak on the motivations of any councillors.
I'm not specifically stating any councillors.
It's the spirit of the direction.
I understand that. I say, I'm saying there was a comment directed towards Council Moran. And I think it's unfair to say that he doesn't have a right to say that and that it's uncalled for. And I would love, what I'm saying is, I would love for us all to walk out of here. But it's getting to a point where I think it's unfair to the members of our public to continue to ignore the emails that we receive and the public comments that we receive and say that we're only going to cut this from the board event. When all we receive is emails saying, don't cut from the board event. I mean, it would, it would have been more fair to say that this was going to be kind of a split between the two, that we're going to have some from town and some, but we're saying we're going to leave everything on the town and, you know, we're just going to take everything from the board event. When we know we're not at a level services budget with them to begin with, that we've done over half a million dollars worth of cuts so far to board event. That we've had the superintendent sitting here saying that with each, you know, fifty, fifty-nine thousand, uh, we're reducing another position. It's it's now to me gone to the point where we're doing an injustice to the board event. And man, would I love to walk out of here and say like, I'm going to support this budget, but I I, you know, I think I know where Council Moran is coming from when he says he he can't support it right now. It's just, it it doesn't feel like we're doing the right thing.
Thank you. What else? Council Moran?
Um, so I agree with Council Utechek that, um, as I have said at every budget meeting that we've had, that it's so important that this whole council stands behind the budget that we put forward, and I have done that every time. Even when I have accepted cuts that I don't think is in the best interest of the town, because I think it's so important that we work together and we compromise. Um, but I refuse to let that be one-sided and then be forced to support when I'm not getting a corresponding or when I feel like I'm not getting a corresponding compromise. So, um, I respect you, Council Utechek, and I I get what you're saying. Um, it's just that I can't, um, in good conscience, support it. Um, and I just I just don't think it's fair, um, to require that when that hasn't happened from, and have each budget from every councillor. Um, when I've, I've, I've tried my hardest, uh, to compromise and work together. Um, that'll always be my goal. Um, but, you know, if I'm not being met halfway, you know, that that's where I come from. Thank you.
Understood.
Understood.
Like, I just want to say it has been.
Any other comments? Okay, we will do a roll call. Council Shay?
Aye.
Council Noonan?
Aye.
Council Utechek?
Aye.
Council Moran?
No.
Council Buckler?
Nay.
Council Moran?
Aye.
I am a nay. That passes, uh, four, three. Uh, just as we did last time, uh, we would we need to set a resolution uh, for the referendum time place to authorize the town manager or their designee to place the required legal notice and also to prepare and print explanatory text. Is there a motion to do those three things? For our agenda items seven, items two, three, and four.
Discussion?
Can we have a motion for, and then discuss?
So moved.
Okay, uh, motion by Council Mari. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Noonan. You wanted to say that then?
Yeah, I think it's just important to kind of go over some of the, uh, Yeah, I think it's just important to kind of go over some of the, um, comments that had been made about, uh, just the expenses incurred with the town with each budget going forward signage. I know that you touched on that the last time that we were here, Katie, but I think it would be important, kind of this next step. Um, of how much it is, how much it costs the town, uh, to do what we're doing and just kind of let folks know what would happen if this next one fails. I think it's important that at least at this juncture, that.
Sure. Uh, Town Manager, do you have an approximate cost to the town of each referendum?
Five thousand for the referendum. What Ms. Bartlett spent, that's, uh, talked about earlier, uh, an additional, uh, five thousand and then that doesn't include staffing and um, work to get that facilitated, uh, that and of course, then the consternation in town as well, the two, two tax bills of the news.
Sure. Thank you. That answers your question. Okay. Thank you. Is there any other, uh, discussion about the motion before us? Uh, is there objection to a roll call though, or, I mean, to a voice though on this? Yeah. So all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Is there any nays? Abstentions?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, we had two abstentions, uh, from Counselor Buckler and Counselor Moran and, uh, five ayes. Okay. Uh, with our business being done, is there any objection to adjournment? Is there any objection? Any objection to adjourn? Okay, we are adjourned. We'll see you on Tuesday night.